Okay. Let's get started. Thank you for attending this evening. Good to see you all. It's nice to see some people from the community here. Administrators, thank you for being here. We appreciate all that you do. Let's start as always with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First of all, thank you for coming out. I don't have much to say to start except last week was really fun. I hope everybody had a chance to come out to one of the many events. I know a lot of board members were there. We appreciate you attending. It was a great week for the students and a lot of fun. So, thank you for that. We have some great website photos and Facebook photos. There's great stuff on social media. So, you can go out and download some of those pictures. I think Melissa and some of our students really captured the events really well. So, it was a great week last week. Something to be proud of. Okay, the presentation is just really tonight Sheila giving you her finance update for this time of year. But I did want to ask the board one thing. Last year, we changed the board meeting locations to have to kind of rotate around the different schools. And also, it served two purposes. The other was it got us out of here to clear out space for the musical specifically. If you are all okay with sort of the locations, then that'll give me some information that I can then try to create the board agenda for next year. You could, the only thing to keep in mind is now that we've updated all this sound, it's really set specifically to go right into those online recorded meetings. It won't have the same capability. This isn't a portable system that will have the same capability at Werner and Junior, Senior High. But I think it sounded okay when we looked back, you know, on those meetings. So, we could like sacrifice, you know, a couple months or a couple meetings at some of those other places for 10th Street if you wanted to. So, I just wanted to ask you to give me a little direction there. If you're all like, alright, last year went well, we liked the changes, then we're good to go. Any thoughts there?
Yeah, I think diversifying the locations is important. But I guess I would want to make sure that the AV situation is good enough that it's going to be, you know, audible for recordings, or viewing it back, or even for people who are just listening in online, live. So, I guess I would want to know that for sure. I know it might not be exactly as like clear as it is in here because we've got a lot more equipment to work with.
Right.
Which we knew that before as well.
Mr. Rizzo should do okay in those other locations. It's obviously not going to be as good as it is here, but.
Do you guys really have modular lighting?
Mm-hmm.
Does it size?
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's important to have locations, or have meetings at all three locations.
Yep.
And the libraries seem to be a good spot, so.
So, we had four meetings, I believe, at each of those other locations. So, I'll just keep the same framework if you're all okay with it, and give you something to look at for next meeting. Sound good?
Yes.
Awesome. Alright, let's move forward here. I'm going to turn the remainder of the presentation section over to Ms. Lubert. I'll get your, let me get your presentation up for the people at home. And then we'll turn it over to her.
Okay, let's share the screen.
Do you want me to sit or stand? Can everyone hear me? Can you hear me?
Your mic on.
She wants to stand.
I know. I just mean for online.
Yeah.
Like the microphone.
Is that alright?
Yeah.
Even better? Okay. I've never been told that I was quiet, so.
Give me one second. I have to allow, I have to allow Bob Team's broadcast to be a presenter, so I'm going to go in and. Okay. Okay.
The heat's on this week as well, more than it was last time. So, I'm hoping everybody's a little more comfortable than they were.
At least until nine o'clock when it switches off.
Until nine o'clock, then I guess the heat is turning off.
Wrap it up by nine.
Keep your comments on there.
Okay.
Otherwise, you're cold.
Okay. Brian and Roger, if I go this to full screen, just let me know you could see it.
Let me know when you're ready. It's blank so far.
Okay, okay. Can you see that?
Yes, sir.
Brian, Steph, you can see this? Everyone?
Yep. I got it.
Okay.
Yep, good. Thank you.
Go for it, Ms. Lubert. Oh, where's that clipper, Bob?
Hey, that's the old bridge.
Yes, it is. But it had the color scheme that I needed.
Historical perspective.
It had the autumn-orange colors.
It's not working.
I can stand up there.
I was going to say, let me turn it on. Okay, we're good.
We're good.
You want to, you need to talk into there.
No, I think I'm loud enough. I can click.
You okay?
It won't carry.
It might not carry to the.
Okay. Alright. Well, I just want to say that I was, this is my first homecoming that I've gotten to enjoy at River View School District. I was at the game Friday night. I loved it. It was fun. It was, I loved to see the families, even those young kids that weren't in school. Parents bringing their kids out, babes in arms and pajamas and watching the game and crawling around everywhere. It was, it was great. I really enjoyed it. Seems like just a few weeks ago, we were sitting here talking about the 24-25 budget. And here we are, October 7th, and we're already a few months into, into the budget. I want to go back to, let's see. There. Reintroduce you to our budget. Our expenditures and revenues of $26,935,000. The index was 5.3. We did raise taxes 0.8 mils, which equated to a 3.31 percentage tax increase. This is where we currently sit with expenditures. During the months of July and August, you won't see as much in expenditures going out because those two months for teacher salaries are considered last year's salaries. Because our year runs July 1st to June 30th, but teachers' contractual salaries run September 1st to August 31st. So, it won't be until September that you start seeing the teacher salaries coming out of this year's expenditures. On the other side of the coin, the majority of our revenue comes in during discount. So, you'll see that our local sources, which is the majority of our real estate taxes, we have brought in almost 15 and a half million of the almost 19 million in revenues. So, that money sits. It gains good interest. I think we have like 5.3% on our, on all of our bank accounts now. We're not paying the fees that we were paying to PNC Bank. We have it all in Dollar Bank, and we have it in Pliggett, which is our municipal banking.
Hey, not to interrupt, but I'm only seeing the first page. It's not scrolling.
Oh.
For me. I'm not seeing the pages you're flipping to.
Yes, I see.
Okay. Can you still, can you see that?
Yes.
That's the other page. Now, when you click through it, can you still click through here?
Oh, yeah, yes. Yes. Can you see it now?
That's changing.
Okay.
Is that better? Okay, let's do that.
Thank you.
Well, now it's time to hear here.
Okay. So, there you go, gentlemen. I'll go through that.
Yeah.
Alright. Everybody have their binoculars out there.
Trust me, it's a lot of numbers.
Alright, so I will.
Make it bigger.
To make it bigger.
Yep.
Why is it not really 12-2?
Click down there again.
Okay.
Oh, no, bigger. Alright, I'm getting there. It's very panicky.
Okay.
That's good. That's good.
Where's the stupid screen, Lisa?
I'm not a boomer.
I know. He's not a boomer.
I'm Gen X.
It's like my age. We're not boomer.
Alright. Okay. Back in the revenues. Okay. Here's a, here's a further breakdown of the revenues. You'll see that the majority of the revenues that we brought in are the taxes levied by the LEA. This is a little shout out to MBM. This is our delinquent real estate tax update. I took the last, the last five months that WBK was collecting our delinquents, and the most recent five months of the following year from MBM. And you'll see the difference in the collections.
Wow.
That MBM Collections is bringing in. We changed that over last February, this past February. But they didn't really start collecting until like April, May because of the transfer of documents and so forth. So, that was a great decision for the district. As you know, before, I worked with MBM in my previous district. They did an incredible job. We switched from Keystone Collections to MBM, and they knocked it out of the park. This is the last decade of the Act One Index. You'll see here from the 15-16 school year down to the current school year. This just came out recently. As I said in my budget presentation, this 5.3 is the highest it's been ever. This means that taxes could be raised to the index. As you know, we raised 3.3% as the 0.8. This is the historical data on the allowable increases that River View School District could have raised taxes. And these are the actual increases that the district voted on, that the Board of Directors voted on for those years in play. So, this is this coming year for 25-26. When you see my budget presentation several months out, you'll see this 4% and that 0.99. Considerations for 25-26. This is a kind of a short and sweet snapshot of this year, and a little bit of what's coming down the pike for next school year. These are just some considerations for the 25-26 school year. We have that security guard mandate. Whether we do a contracted service and not make that an employee of the district, or if we should hire a security guard, that's going to be anywhere from $60,000 to $90,000. The state's really good at unfunded mandates. They do, they do supply safety and security grants, but those are also mental health grants. And we've been utilizing that for like student services. We are possibly looking at a retiring teacher that's going to be pretty difficult to replace. That teacher coming in, I estimated this at like a Masters I with family insurance at $110,000. We're looking at a possible admin or clerical support for the athletic department. We're just exploring that at this point. So, there's not really a dollar amount attached to it. Additionally, we have our annual primary curriculum resources. This coming school year is social studies and history. That runs anywhere between $175,000 to $200,000 annually. Our healthcare increase between 6% and 12%. You know, with it being an election year, a lot of this is throwing it up against the wall and seeing what sticks. You don't know until you know. So, we really don't know regardless of who gets into office, what their stance is going to be in healthcare, whether the government's going to subsidize it. We don't know. The rest of the contract negotiations are coming up. That's a big question mark. Kitchen remodel, which is a capital, we're currently bidding that. That just went in the newspaper, and bids are being accepted, I think, next week is the bid open. We are currently exploring possible turf on playgrounds, and that's also a capital expense. So, these are just a handful of things that we need to think about in the future. These are going to come back to you so we can have discussions on them. Sure.
The possible admin clerical for athletics in addition to working with Mrs. Kennedy? Or is something different?
Yes.
Just looking at sort of.
Just giving.
In general, like the hours, how much time, what would be appropriate support? Do we need additional support? So, we're just thinking about that right now at the beginning of this budget cycle.
Ms. Lubert, I also have a question.
Yes.
Is it possible that we could see like a breakdown of how we currently use the mental health grant, or how those funds are currently allocated that we receive?
So, we contract with Blade Run.
Okay.
And we actually just had a meeting with them today at 3:30 for the new contract. We have placed those funds, I think originally, those contracts were placed into some of your COVID ESER funds. And then, when the 23-24 mental health and safety grant came out, two years were placed into that grant. We just completed and submitted a week, a week and a half ago, the 24-25, and we placed it into that.
Okay.
So, we've been utilizing federal funds to pay for those Blade Run services, which is approximately $25,000 a year.
Okay. Thank you.
We have all the ESER, we have an overview of those ESER funds on our website. We can add maybe this week.
The PCCD grants.
I can add PCCD and just kind of give an overview of what that was in 22-23, and what it, what it, you know, if it gets accepted for 24-25, we can just kind of give an overview of like.
I can pull the budgets and do a spreadsheet.
Big ticket items.
For each year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's easier to do.
That's easy.
Yeah.
This last page is just the Act One timeline and some dates to remember. In January, I'll bring a resolution to the board indicating that we won't raise the rate of tax by more than the index, which as you saw was 4%, 4%. May 31st is our deadline to adopt the proposed version of the final budget, and June 30th is every year deadline to adopt the 25-26 final budget. This is just a short but sweet overview of where we are and where we're going. Does anyone have any questions?
Those online, can you hear us? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Lubert. Hey, Roger and Brian and Steph, could you hear her?
Yes.
Yeah, 100%.
All good. Boomer.
Own it. You've got to own it.
I'm just, there's nothing wrong with boomers. I'm okay with that. Okay. Alright, let's move, let's move forward. Thank you, Ms. Lubert. We appreciate it. We have a lot more discussions, obviously, about the budget. We're looking forward to those. And hopefully, this provides a little transparency in terms of what we're looking at, and where we're going. Okay, we have our first hearing of citizens here. This is the last decade of the Act One Index. You'll see here from the 1516 school year down to the current school year. This just came out recently. As I said in my budget presentation, this 5.3 is the highest it's been ever. This means that taxes could be raised to the index. As you know, we raised 3.3% as the point eight. This is the historical data on the allowable increases that Riverview School District could have raised taxes. And these are the actual increases that the district voted on, that the Board of Directors voted on for those, those years in play. So this is this coming year for 2526. When you see my budget presentation several months out, you'll see this 4% and that .99. Considerations for 2526, this is a kind of a short and sweet snapshot of this year and a little bit of what's coming down the pipe for next school year. These are just some considerations for the 2526 school year. We have that security guard mandate. Whether we do a contracted service and not make that an employee of the district or if we should hire a security guard, that's going to be anywhere from $60,000 to $90,000. The state's really good at unfunded mandates. They do, they do supply safety and security grants, but those are also mental health grants. And we've been utilizing that for like student services. We are possibly looking at a retiring teacher that's going to be pretty difficult to replace. That teacher coming in, I estimated this at like a Masters I with family insurance at $110,000. We're looking at a possible admin or clerical support for the athletic department. We're just exploring that at this point, so there's not really a dollar amount, amount attached to it. Additionally, we have our annual primary curriculum resources. This coming school year is social studies and history. That runs anywhere between $175,000 to $200,000 annually. Our healthcare increase between 6% and 12%. You know, with it being an election year, a lot of this is throwing it up against the wall and seeing what sticks. You don't know until you know. So, we really don't know regardless of who gets into office, what their stance is going to be in healthcare, whether the government's going to subsidize it, we don't know. The rest of the contract negotiations are coming up. That's a big question mark. Kitchen remodel, which is a capital, we're currently bidding that. That just went in the newspaper and bids are being accepted, I think, next week is the bid open. We are currently exploring possible turf on playgrounds and that's also a capital expense. So these are just a handful of things that we need to think about in the future. These are going to come back to you so we can have discussions on them. Sure.
The possible admin clerical for athletic, is that in addition to working with Mrs. Kennedy or something different?
Yes.
Just looking at sort of
giving
conditions in general, like the hours, how much time, what would be appropriate support? Do we need additional support? So we're just thinking about that right now at the beginning of this budget cycle.
Ms. Lubert, I also have a question. Is it possible that we could see like a breakdown of how we currently use the mental health grant? Or how those funds are currently allocated that we receive?
So we contract with Blade Run.
Okay.
And we actually just had a meeting with them today at 3:30 for the new contract. We have placed those funds, I think originally those contracts were placed into some of your COVID ESER funds. And then when the 2324 Mental Health and Safety Grant came out, two years were placed into that grant. We just completed and submitted a week, a week and a half ago, the 2425 and we placed it into that.
Okay.
So, we've been utilizing federal funds to pay for those Blade Run services, which is approximately $25,000 a year.
Okay, thank you.
We have all the ESER, we have an overview of those ESER funds on our website. We can add maybe this week, I can add PCCD and just kind of give an overview of what that was in 2223 and what it, what it, you know, if it gets accepted for 2425, we can just kind of give an overview of like
I can pull the budgets and do a spreadsheet for each year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's easier to do.
That's easy.
Yeah.
This last page is just the Act One timeline and some dates to remember. In January, I'll bring a resolution to the board indicating that we won't raise the rate of tax by more than the index, which as you saw was 4%, 4%. May 31st is our deadline to adopt the proposed version of the final budget and June 30th as, as every year deadline to adopt the 2526 final budget. This is just a short but sweet overview of where we are and where we're going. Does anyone have any questions?
Those online, can you hear us? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Lubert. Hey, Roger and Brian and Steph, could you hear her?
Yes.
Yeah, 100%.
All good.
I'm just, there's nothing wrong with boomers. I'm okay with that. Okay. All right, let's move, let's move forward. Thank you, Ms. Lubert. We appreciate it. We have a lot more discussions, obviously, about the budget. We're looking forward to those. And hopefully this provides a little transparency in terms of what we're looking at and where we're going. Okay, we have our first hearing of citizens here.
I want to mention the part two of master planning.
Oh, yes, master planning, part two is October 21st. Master Planning Part Two, which is just an overview of different options and things that we're looking at, a forward-thinking approach. It's also important to understand that this board and the administration has no preconceived notions of how to do business moving forward, although we simply want to do is kind of see what's out there, take a look at capacity, look at finances and get an idea of what options we have and then make, you know, a concerted effort to, you know, think ahead and be smart about our finances and be smart about planning our future. So I commend the board for looking forward five, 10 years after many of us won't be here anymore, myself included. Anyway, that's October 21st. Thank you, Ms. Shapiro.
And the reason that we don't have a meeting next week because there's, we skip a week is because there's no school next Monday, the 14th. So usually our meetings are back to back, but that's why there's a week between.
And we, we could have a board meeting, but a lot of the board members have families and children in the district, so it's better to just have that week in between, I think. Okay. First hearing are for agenda topics only. If you'd like to speak, please sign in, come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Please keep in mind that the board does not typically respond to public comment, but rather takes the hearing into consideration for future governance. Also realize that all comments and meetings are being recorded. Anyone like to speak in the first hearing? There is another hearing at the end for all school-related topics. Okay. Let's move on to discussion and review of potential motions for the voting meeting, which as Ms. Shapiro said, is October 21st. Let's start with business and finance. There's one item, Ms. Lubert.
Number one is to approve payout number 13 from Merritt Electric for their work at various schools in the amount of $11,792.29.
Any discussion, questions?
I don't have any questions about this, but I was wondering, Ms. Lubert, would you be able, can we put the presentation, your presentation this evening online?
Absolutely.
Perfect. I think it will help come budgeting time later on.
Okay. Let's move on to agreements, contracts, and resolutions. Ms. Lubert and I are going to split this section, starting with Ms. Lubert to discuss the first two items.
Number one, I have a motion to approve a three-year contract extension with UGI for natural gas on the People's Gas System with the start date of September 1st, 2025. As you know, we're part of the Allegheny Intermediate Unit Natural Gas Consortium. This is a recommendation by the board at the natural, in the, we had a meeting, I'm actually on the Natural Gas Consortium Board. So this was a recommendation. We were currently at a negative .44 and this contract goes to a negative .50 for the, for the term. Number two is a motion to approve a maintenance contract with industrial commercial elevator. This is a five-year term, beginning December 27th, 2024. Our previous contract was with Schindler. They are, in my opinion, an extremely expensive elevator company. They've been around the longest, between Schindler and Otis. Mr. McKenzie got several quotes from several different companies, including the, including Schindler. And this was the, this is the contract that we are recommending for approval. And it is a cost savings of at least 3,000, I think it's around $3,000 a year.
Any questions or comments on those two items? Okay, we'll also be asking for your approval of an addendum from the USGA, who is seeking to add the junior, senior high school band room to their list of facilities. We also have our annual agreement between us and the borough for the use of Creekside Park, which we utilize at times for our athletic programs. We also have an annual agreement with Wesley Services, one of, for one of our students for the upcoming year. Any questions on those? Those are fairly typical, although the USGA was just an additional part of that contract, which you already approved. Questions there?
I can't remember if their original contract says it, and I'm sure that it does, but do they indemnify the district for their use of the property and then also the, their storing things and things like that? Are we making sure that there's, I don't know, supervision or anything in terms of like all the band equipment, uniforms and stuff like that that are going to be in there while they're allowing people of the public to use that room?
Yeah, so they're just gonna, they're not going to use the parts with all of the equipment. So the partition, I don't know about indemnify, I've got to go back to the original contract.
My recollection.
I believe it, it did.
This is just an addendum, you know, adding this to it. So the original contract had the indemnification language in it.
But it didn't have the use of the facility, so.
Specific to the band room?
Right.
Right, I think that, but you're saying, you can comment on that. I don't know what they're having access to.
Yeah, so it's just the, their idea, or at least what they talked to us about when they came is that they're going to partition, partition all of those items off so that nobody has access to those spaces. They're just going to use part of the band room for, I think, part of their white glove service to their VIP population. So I guess they're going to go in and have some nice doughnuts and nice drinks and, and then get escorted up to the event this summer, so. Yeah, they're not going to touch or be around any of our stuff.
I just mean, also the indemnity would also
Include our property.
Yes, and so if they get hurt or anything like that.
They provide a certificate of liability.
Okay, perfect.
They use so many of our spaces, so I imagine it probably covers all of them.
Yeah.
All the buildings.
Yeah, I believe that's in the original contract. I am 95% sure, but I'll double check and I'll report back to you. Okay. Last item for Ms. Lubert.
The final motion would be a motion to approve a proposal from Huckstein for the district-wide HVAC Mechanical Preventative Maintenance Program for a term of five years in the amount of $95,034. On your attachments, you'll see that I did a maintenance agreement breakdown for the bid, for the quotes that we received. Huckstein is, is a company that I have worked with in the past. We currently have an, have a preventative maintenance contract that, that just expired with Limbaugh. Limbaugh did not quote this, but you'll see that we did get quotes from two other companies. So I'm, I'm very, this is actually a significant cost savings.
Any questions on that, board? Okay, let's move into board governance. We'll be asking for your approval of the second reading of the 000 and 100 series PSBA recommended policies as listed. We discussed this last month as well. The policy members, the policy, oh, interesting microphone. Policy members of the board are meeting tomorrow at 1:00 PM to level set and determine a plan of action for additional policy considerations. But while we are working through this, are there any questions, comments, changes, discussions regarding, regarding the policies listed for second reading?
For the admin content, can we just make sure that it's the updated versions of the policies so that we know what we're voting on next week or in two weeks?
Yep.
I just wanted to clarify on our 006 policy. After last week, there were, I was kind of going back and forth about this policy, but a couple of things that were said last week made me feel more comfortable with this policy. And I just wanted to clarify that. One was Bridgette, your short little paragraph that you said. That spoke to me, talking about democracy and making sure that everything is open to the community and for people to be involved. And I've, we always want that to happen. So I would never want to be, you know, appear that I, that that wasn't, that was not my intention. And the other thing was Falco mentioning the master planning meeting that I was at and that mentioning that how a presentation was going to be presented to the board could have been in violation of the Sunshine Act, which I never would have thought that that would have been something in violation of the Sunshine Act. So obviously my impression of what could be part of that was confused. So I would never want also to be in violation of the Sunshine, Sunshine Act. So I am, you know, in, in support of, you know, with the changes we've made about going to committees versus delegates. Just one place where I was coming from with this though is always trying to be having, that we as a board should always be in consideration of what we're asking our employees to do and what we are adding on to their plate. Last month, we added on the committees versus delegations, which is, you know, adding on now scheduling meetings, having somebody to take minutes, advertising, things like that. We added on recording of meetings, adding a YouTube channel that needs to be monitored and updated or not. And we, I always knew I was going, oh, the policy committee. We added on another committee, which also has to be advertised and scheduled meetings with the administration. So while I think all of those are good ideas, I think that we really, as a board, need to be conscientious of what we are asking our employees to do because I, personally, I have a job where I, I'm a physical therapist. I want to work with people. I want to do my job and help them. But, you know, weekly, being asked to make one extra phone call, text in this, add it, go into one more meeting, go into, even those things are, even though those things are small and don't take a lot of time, when you add it up, it really takes away from what my purpose in my job is. And I, you know, sometimes I feel like as a board that we come up with an idea and it's good ideas, but we immediately jump on them and we're voting on them the next month. And sometimes I think we need to, you know, step back, good ideas, let's discuss it and see how it really impacts our, our administrators, our teachers, our business manager and all that. So that's kind of where I was coming from when we were talking about the committees and delegates. But, you know, the understanding of how important it is that we do have the community involved with our processes is important. So just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay.
I did want to just try to make
Go for it.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I shared some of what Wendy is saying about what we're asking our staff to do in, in having these extra committees. They're, they are great ideas, but I feel like we're going to burn out a lot of people, and not just the staff, but the board members who have already things to do and meetings to attend. So maybe we don't need to do a committee for every delegation, but just wanted to do that in there as well.
Yeah, just point of clarification, they're not all committees now, just, there, some are delegates still and some are committees, only those that, where there might be work done or discussions or things being decided, like finance or policy.
Student life.
Student life.
Education.
Education. Whereas the others will remain delegates, where it's just a singular person reporting out on whatever the updates are from either the administrative, you know, administrative partner or if it's a government entity or another entity that we work with.
And also, I, I do agree with all of you about the sentiments of like making sure that our administration isn't bogged down or allowing them to, you know, have more time in their day to focus on actually administrating the schools and the students and the faculty and keeping them all running. But the committee part is not really like us doing that. It, it is a state law in our education code that requires us to have these public meetings for committees. So while, yes, we added on the policy committee, so that is true. The actual idea of having these meetings, scheduling them, making sure they're well advertised, creating agendas, having meeting minutes that we're publishing, that's all in the education code. So maybe we have not been doing that the last several years, but that doesn't mean that it's not a part of the statute and what the legislature had intended and what we should be doing. So, yeah.
I just wanted to put my two cents in. I know I said this last meeting, but I wanted to add a little bit. I think all of us being the delegates and going to these meetings and then reporting back here, this, this is the, this is the open room, you know, this is the, and it's online and everything. This is the way to include everyone and to hear from everybody and to give those reports. Otherwise, I'm not sure, if they're all open and everybody's welcome to attend, I'm not sure why we're doing that process. But also, I feel like maybe, I definitely feel like the safety meetings need to remain as they are because of the subject material. I thought when I signed up for a safety meeting, I kind of assumed it was about the safety of the, of the district, you know, the safety of everybody. It's kind of not. It's kind of more a workers' comp meeting. That's mostly what they talk about, the workers' comp reports, if there are any. Luckily, there haven't been in a long time, but, you know, if one comes up, that's, that's private information. Also, something up, that, that came up recently was just about one of the many, many doors that we have was being repaired and it was being repaired the, within the 24-hour period. I mean, they were repairing it the next day, but I just don't want that to kind of, things like that to kind of blow up, maybe. Like maybe someone would hear that a door was compromised and then it just goes through the town and then, oh, we're not safe. And, but that wasn't the case. We were fixing it right away. So it's just things like that, that I, I just, I'm fine with reporting back here, hearing from everybody. If there's any issue, like people want to hear about how safe our schools are, glad to share it, glad to be open about that. I just don't think that the meetings, particularly about the workers' comp information, needs to be invitations, you know, inviting everybody. So that's my two cents.
And I think we had clarified that with a safety committee especially, you can go into executive session
Right.
during that meeting to protect that information, both the door situation and the workers' comp situation.
Right, right. Thank you.
I also had a great conversation with a parent, you know, if there's a group of parents that have safety-related issues or issues on anything, you know, I think last year we met with parents about class sizes. And we can have those meetings, you know, we can have parents come in, we can have discussions, we can bring administrators to those meetings, answer questions, clear up people's worries and provide context at any point in time as well. So, you know, even if you don't have a public meeting, Leanne, we can still meet and have those discussions with people on the items that people really want to talk about or they're wondering about in terms of our schools. We can always have those conversations and have many times in the past. Any other comments, questions, concerns, discussion? It's great discussion, everyone. I appreciate that. Okay, the last item here are the small game of chance. We just, we've received requests for 10th Street PTO, Junior Senior High PTO, Lady Ray Lady Raiders, RABBA, R B B B A, our MBA and the Werner PTO, which you can expect to be included in your packets for the voting meeting. Just wanted to make mention of those this week so that you're aware that some of those will be in the packets next month. Any questions there? Those are typical annual things. Okay. Let's keep moving. Okay. Let's move into personnel. Next week, we'll be asking for your approval of the Strength, Conditioning and Fitness Coach, which we're excited about, the eighth grade boys' basketball coach and our usual Precision substitutes, teachers, paraprofessionals and custodians. We'll also be asking for your approval to accept the resignation of one of our paraprofessionals. We have a letter of interest for the junior and senior class sponsor. We'll also be asking for your approval to rescind the supplement offer to the baseball assistant. We also will be asking for your approval of the event workers. And the best of the items, in my opinion, in this section, which is the approval to hire a 10th Street nurse, nurse's aide, which we've been working really hard on. So any questions on personnel items?
For the Strength, Conditioning and Fitness Coach, what are the, like, what's the extent of those duties and like time that she'd be available to students? Is that just during the day or is that like just after school?
Yeah, those are after-school hours, from after school until the start of practices. So-
Okay.
Hour and a half, two hours a day of specific work. We can, I can send you all the job description of that if you'd like.
Yeah, that'd be good.
If you'd be interested in that.
Hiring template, but not the-
Sure.
Like info as to what she'll be doing exactly or how many hours or whatever.
I'm assuming that's a year, year-long?
Say that again?
That's a year-long position?
Yes, that's a year-long position.
Every-
That's every day after school. And this is primarily, it's not just for the athletic teams, but it's for any student. We want to make the fitness center available to every student. And so any student can come down, meet with the coach, get a, you know, this person can create, you know, training opportunities for kids and things for the kids to work on and also be a person that can make sure that, you know, everyone's safe in the fitness center. So we're really excited about it. I think it's gonna really help in the use of that space, which is really being used quite a bit.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, how is the scheduling of that going with all the different teams? Like, is that something that Andre still like?
Mr. Hewitt?
Okay.
There's a lot of people in there.
I say, yeah, space-wise with the current season teams and then additional kids. Right. Okay.
Multiple in-season teams now, though, can work out at the same time.
Well, somebody, like, if somebody's not a student athlete, then could they sign up with this coach to say, hey, I want to come from three to four and just learn how to use the whatever machine or something like that? Okay.
Does this position take the place of a coach being present?
No, coaches still have to escort their teams in there. This is really primarily for our student body who are not in athletic teams. I mean, certainly, they can utilize a strength and fitness coach. The coaches can utilize this person, but this is a person that's gonna be in there so that, you know, anybody can go work out. Like, my kids are able to work out at Pine Richland. There's somebody in there that can support them and provide them, like, you know, workout routines and schedules that they can then bring home and do at home. And so it's just a way to better utilize, you know, the facility.
Staff the room so that it's not, not staffed unless there's like a team coach in there, I'd imagine, right?
Yeah, right now, the coaches have to be in with their teams, but this is a way for anybody to come in during those hours after school. It's pretty exciting.
I, I do know that some of our smaller teams that were never able to get into the weight room have been able to use it and they're loving it. So it's really great that it's the space for everybody. The space and the time is made available for all, all the teams.
Yeah, I would just say that I'd love to have more coaches requesting the time to use it because I know some teams are using it and then there's others that are not, pretty much at all. And so that, to me, is a bummer that, like, certain, certain teams, for example, soccer, I don't think they've ever touched that room yet this fall. So I, I say, I just want to encourage coaches to make sure that they're requesting that time because that's why it's there, for everybody to use, not just certain teams or certain folks at some times, you know, or whatever. So.
Perhaps some of those teams will utilize it in the offseason as well. So, yeah, they're choose to condition on the field. That's okay. I guess that's a coach's choice. But the coaches definitely know that they have a state-of-the-art facility available to them that they can use and in-season first, first priority to use.
Of course. That's why some of the kids are a little bit bummed that they're like, oh, we've never, we've never been in there and our season's almost done.
Yeah, yeah. They want to get in there.
Kind of wonder why those coaches haven't requested the time.
Right, right.
Also, are, will we, as an aside, will we also get the resumes for everyone as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Everyone, you know, all of those that have them, remember Precision, you know, does, you know, of course. Okay. Any other questions there? Some exciting things in that, in that group of personnel items, I think. Some people that are really gonna support kids nicely. Okay. Let's move into student life. There's two items here. One is the RHS trip to Cleveland. The other is the budgetary outlines for the remaining student activities and booster groups, which were included in your packet. Do you have any questions or discussion regarding these two items for student life?
I know there's an online musical meeting going on right now. I think Mr. Leibel, I'll say, and I just wanted to say, I appreciate that he's put that out there to parents to join online to hear more about the trip because it's not always possible to join a meeting during the day or find time to connect with a teacher or something. So that's really nice for accessibility.
It's a great itinerary as well. Kids will have a lot of fun and perform. Okay, education. We're asking for your consideration regarding two items. First is the approval of my attendance at the AASA National Conference this year. There's no cost to the district for this. Second is for Mrs. Kevortek to attend the Pennsylvania Business Education Association's convention at the cost of approximately $500 to the district. As you know, just also want to take a moment to plug Mrs. Kevortek. She was honored last week by our Auditor General. He's come to our district twice. First time, he was so impressed with the financial literacy course that he came back last week to give the school and Ms. Kevortek an award for creating an exemplary financial literacy program. And we're well ahead of state mandates that are coming down the pike in terms of financial literacy. So it's pretty exciting, you know, when the Auditor General or like a big person like the governor or something comes to the school. It's kind of pretty neat. So we were able to celebrate one of our staff members who's doing good work in that, in that arena. So. Any questions on those two education items? Oh, no, it's after that. It's, it's not, yeah, it's not during Mardi Gras. That wouldn't be my, my scene anyhow. I wouldn't want to do that. Oh, man. It's funny.
Hopefully, they've had time to clean up.
Yeah, I hope so. I don't think it's ever super clean there, but, you know.
Not usually.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, any other questions there? Okay, last is board meeting minutes. We'll be asking for your approval of the September 9th and September 16th minutes. Any additions or admissions or comments regarding the meeting minutes listed there?
The meeting minutes are not uploaded.
I'll say, this one, yeah, doesn't have, like, the shell is there, but the content is not loading for me.
And then-
You can see them?
If you click on them and it looks like this.
No, just like-
It's like the page is there, but-
Yeah.
There's not full content.
Yeah, so if the full ones and then-
Yeah.
And then for the voting, if there were abstentions, because I think I had to abstain from something, we have to fill out paperwork that should be posted with our meeting minutes.
Yeah, it's funny. It just says, like, the headings, but it doesn't actually show the content. It's weird.
It was in there, right, yesterday? Okay, we will get those to you.
Re-upload.
We will re-upload. And we'll include those abstention, that extension paperwork. Mr. Paris?
I have a question, actually, back to board governance. There was a policy that we were waiting for that said it will be moved to September, but now it's October. That one wasn't added in.
Generative AI?
Yeah.
You're talking about?
Yeah.
Thought we'd just kind of wait, if that's okay, because we're meeting tomorrow. The policy group is meeting tomorrow, so-
Okay.
We're hoping to discuss that with the, with the group tomorrow.
So does that mean move to November?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We need them to take a look at that, I think, ahead of time.
And also the Title IX.
Yes, that's, we're still waiting on Ms. Lane, our legal counselor, counsel, to kind of go over those. She's still working on that. I know Ms. DeRocher knows all about that. So she should have that ready to go pretty soon. But she, her recommendation was to wait on those 103 policies until we, she got more information. So, yes, those are still on the docket. Those are still in the hundreds that we're waiting on. Other questions there? Okay. That brings us in, go ahead. You have something else?
Yeah, the, sorry, also going back to board governance, I didn't notice it until just now. The policy number 150, comparability of services, that should be considered our first reading, not our second reading. I don't believe that that has been introduced to the board yet. I think that this is our first meeting, seeing that.
Being on the actual-
And then our, in our agenda, it has a second. So I just, just to clarify that one.
Okay. Okay. Any other comment or considerations? Okay. That brings us to the second hearing. This is for all school-related topics. If you'd like to speak, please sign in, come to the microphone, state your name and address and keep your comments three minutes or less. Please also keep in mind that the board does not typically respond to public comment but rather takes the hearing into consideration for future governance. Also know that all comments and meetings are recorded. Would anyone like to speak in our second hearing of citizens? Ms. Tomlinson?
Okay, Paula Tomlinson, 234 Third Street, Oak Meadow. First of all, I want to say thank you for every year our school district supporting our night under the lights. It was another awesome week and starting with letting the junior high kiddos have an opportunity. It was fantastic because I have a junior high kiddo now who loved that whole experience. The senior night for soccer was fantastic and shout out to Mr. Paris for helping us with the setup and takedown and Ms. Schutz volunteering her time that whole week with, between sacred dinner and everything on senior night. So thank you to that. One point that I tried to find in our minutes, because I feel like we talked about this in the last year, that our athletic trainer is awesome, but she's obviously not a doctor. And in the girls' game, obviously, we needed a doctor or an M, somebody. And I thought we talked about the, I felt like it was discussed, like UPMC having, there's an MD that's affiliated or linked. And that night, I, I spoke to some of our administrators and I said, where's the sideline doctor? During football, it felt like we always, there was always somebody on the sideline. And that was pretty scary that night. Thank God, that player is okay. And, and to tie into that, you know, we had no ambulance, but without Joey Flannick and his dad, you know, thankfully Joey is a trained AMT, but they were able to assess her fairly quickly and call an ambulance, but it took a while. The new basketball courts, I got, this is like seven degrees of this because I was really upset over not having an ambulance. The ambulance, even if we had one, could not get in because the basketball courts where they built it, that's the gate. The ambulance would normally come in. Sometimes they'd come in Third Street. So they had to carry her to, and then I understand we need an ambulance Friday night and they had a hard time getting the stretcher through all of the people. So that's upsetting to me as a parent because it was my child who was injured. But I feel like I couldn't find it. I searched a long time for the medical. I felt like it was a UPMC. I don't know that we named a doctor. But that is, for me, in the front of my brain, like, we gotta, we gotta talk about that. Years ago, I'm not comparing administrations at all, but there were quarterly meetings with superintendent and I was one of the, like, two people that would come every quarter. I don't know if that is something your schedules, and Dr. Z would do it too. And again, I was, you know, he would bring in treats or whatever. He'd say, please take them with you. And it would be like probably me, Mrs. F. Tanis, you know, three or four of us. But it was just transparent or sunshine, like you were opening up, you know, a half an hour or 40 minutes of your day once a quarter and saying, here, have breakfast with the superintendent or, you know, not like, you didn't feed us, but it was, there was orange juice or water. And I think one time it was Mets was trying to introduce some of their new, like, you know, whole grain something and we were eating these muffins and things like that. But it was, it was interesting because I just think about, there's so many new parents that don't even understand how awesome our school district is and how it really is like a big family. And, you know, so many times you hear so many, they're spending money on this or spending money, but maybe they can't come at night. Maybe they have little kids, you know. But those, you know, half an hour, once a quarter. So that was something I thought of. And another thing I thought of, because my son is very aware of just vaping. It's just is. It's just life right now, right? And lack of access to bathrooms, even the new doors that lock two kids or three kids will go in there together. And I don't know if there's a sensor annual review that we have that the company comes in and maybe tests these sensors. But he's in eighth grade and he sees everything and he, thank God, tells me everything. And he said, so I just find a different bathroom. And I said, well, that's fair. He would never walk to see Mr. Turk, Dr. Turk or Mr. Hewitt because he would never, his, the fear of someone saying, you know, you turned us in. But I know it's an ongoing problem. I personally love that nicotine seminar we did last March of 2023. And if we could get it back on the docket, it was like, what was the name, who?
Doggio.
A Doggio?
A Doggio and, yeah. And I would help advertise it because I was very disappointed in the attendance that we had that night. It was so informative and it has, you know, vaping has gotten so much worse at such a younger age. I wonder if that agency is, are we on a cycle that they, you know, they come when we ask them or is it every couple of years? But I would, I would help market that anyway, promote it, you know. I think that's all. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Emily Erdl, Erdl Jack F. Tanis, 143 Oak Meadow. I wanted to just tell you that on behalf of RABBA, as a RABBA board member, Andre has been doing a fabulous job. Everything from coming to Sunday baseball, fall baseball Raider games out in Freeport to coming to RABBA meetings. And we had asked- And we had asked in prior years, please come, please come. He came. It's really been a nice liaison between the district and the parents. And at our last RAB meeting, we had a really good turnout and parents were very, very impressed. So kudos to you and to him. I know Dr. English, I had sent that email on his behalf. I feel like that's important to do because I definitely will gripe when I need to gripe, but I like to say good things whenever they need to be said to. Also, I have to say that when we talk about giving more responsibility, Sheila, I have never seen a woman wear so many hats in her role. And with RAB, that's another thing I'd like to say. She, whether it's on work hours or off, she's getting back to us. She's getting us answers when we need clarification and we just really appreciate that, Sheila. You've been a super asset to the district as well. So thank you.
Very nice. Thank you.
Love that.
Anyone else? Thanks for the kind words, Emily. It's nice. Okay, that's all we have for this week. If there are no other questions, concerns or comments, Ms. Garabey, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that.
All right. Well, thank you for attending. It's great to see all you parents and administrators. Keep up the great work. We appreciate you.
Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.